Okay, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. So this is time for nine thirty. So let's start from today's COW meeting. So call to order. Uh, next one is council announcement. Any council member has an announcement? Okay, Mayor Weiss, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Good morning, everybody. Um, so I'm not sure if everybody was excited about the Toronto Blue Jays the other day. Put your hand up if you're excited about Toronto Blue Jays. Okay, I see a few hands that are not excited, but we'll talk later. Um, anyway, I um, I'm, I'm real pleased to see that happen. And uh, since nineteen ninety-three, uh, the, we're going to be able to see uh, our great Toronto Blue Jays in the World Series. So on Friday is game one of the World Series, and um, we've been working with staff in the eventuality that this happened. Not that I was ever concerned that it wouldn't happen. But uh, now that it has happened, on Friday uh, at Richmond Green, we will be hosting a watch party for the community. So I would encourage everybody to come on out and cheer on, uh, get them started on the, their road to success for the World Series in a, in a good way. Um, so it's, the game starts at eight o'clock. So people, I'm sure, will start gathering a bit before that. Dress warmly because it will be probably a little bit chilly. Bring your lawn chair, uh, bring popcorn, and uh, we hopefully will see the whole community out there. So the details are still being worked out. Um, but there will be uh, information going out shortly on my social media, the city, city's social media, and hopefully uh, the council's uh, social media as well. So we can get as many people out uh, to wish our Toronto Blue Jays well as they embark on this. So we'll see you there.
Thanks so much. Anyone else? Okay. The councillor. Genshin? Okay, okay, no, okay, perfect. Thank you so much. So next one, introduction of emergency and time-sensitive matters. Anyone? None? Adoption of agendas? Anyone want to move it? Councillor uh, Thompson? Any objections? All in favor, right? Yeah, all in favor? Okay, next one, disclosure of precarious interest and general nature there or anyone? Okay, none. Next one, identification of items requires separate discussion. Anyone? Okay, none, do I need a motion? Okay. Yeah, so you call, uh, Deputy Mayor, uh, Godwin Chan, wait, all in favor? All passed. Number seven, also adoption of reminder of gender auto included, right? So yeah, okay, next one, public hearings. Today we have the tax adjustment under section three five seven and three five eight of the municipal act. So this is the public forum, so I want uh, give opportunity to public here. If anyone want comment on eight point one? For the tax adjustment, there are four items listed here. Anyone? Okay, now, so can I have a moers to move this sections forward? Anyone? Okay, councillor Sue, all in favor? Okay, all passed. So next one gonna be the pronunciation. Today we have a presentation here by Lindsay Toth, Principal uh, for regarding the East Beaver Creek secondary plan. Okay, thank you so much. The floor is yours.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, engaged members of um, the public and councillors. My name is Lindsay Toth, and I am a Principal of Gladkey Planning Associates. I'm here today with colleagues from DTIH, Parcel and SLR to provide a project update on the East Beaver Creek secondary plan. Today's presentation will conclude phase one of the study, where we completed the background review and developed three conceptual land use options. In phase two, we will evaluate the options and advance a preferred development concept and policy directions. In phase three, we will draft the secondary plan policy, text and mapping. The draft secondary plan will be released for statutory public consultation in phase four, then finalized and submitted to council and approval authority for adoption and approval. We expect our work on the secondary plan to wrap up spring twenty twenty-seven. The purpose of the secondary plan is to create a policy framework that will guide development in the EBC study area, which is bounded by East Pier Street and Norman Bethune Avenue to the north, Highway four oh four to the east, Highway seven to the south, and includes properties that front on Leslie Street on the west side. EBC was historically an employment area. The impetus for the secondary plan was a municipally initiated employment conversion in twenty twenty-two. Subsequently, council amended the Richmond Hill official plan to identify the area as a local center in the city structure. The secondary plan area has excellent access to bus rapid transit along Highway seven and planned future transit along Leslie Street. The entire study area falls within two PMTSAs, Protected Major Transit Station areas, which come with minimum density targets of two hundred people plus jobs per hectare. A significant change in the context of the area occurred in twenty twenty-three when Buttonville Airport, located northeast of the study area, ceased operations. The federal airport zoning regulations that restrict building heights due to aircraft flight paths are no longer in force, removing one constraint on intensification in the area. The study area has uncommon adjacencies, being surrounded on all sides by employment areas and major transportation infrastructure. The secondary plan will address land use compatibility to ensure the health and safety of residents and the continued viability of nearby employment uses. EBC differs from Richmond Hill's other centers in that it does not abut low-rise residential neighborhoods. This has two implications. First, building heights are not limited by OP policies that require a transition down in building heights towards the neighborhoods. The second implication is that EBC cannot rely on community-serving amenities, such as parks, schools and libraries in nearby residential areas, because there are none. All the basic community services and facilities must be provided locally, and at the current time, these are critically lacking. The refined vision responds to this context and the aspirations that we've heard from residents and other interested parties in the area. It imagines EBC as a complete community, where people enjoy a high quality of life and can meet their daily needs locally or through a convenient transit trip. The broad mix of uses, diverse network of public spaces and strong civic presence contribute to EBC's unique identity, complementing the surrounding areas. To achieve this vision, nine guiding principles will got, will shape the secondary plan. They are orderly growth, transportation choice, balanced uses, civic heart, gateway, inclusivity, sensitive transitions, environmental stewardship and design excellence. With this in mind, three conceptual land use options were developed to help us consider the range of possibilities for the East Beaver Creek area. All options share the same block structure, the foundation of a complete community. The street network is designed to make the area more walkable and urban. Smaller blocks will allow for buildings with active frontages and better access. The connections shown may be public or private streets, mid-block connections, pedestrian paths or trails, to be determined in consultation with transportation staff. The two east-west connectors are intended to be public streets and connect to Wertheim Court west of Leslie Street. A new central community park is proposed, including a prominent civic plaza adjacent to the municipal offices. Smaller urban plazas will be interspersed throughout. These spaces allow for both active and passive recreation as well as community events. To support new development, the existing stormwater facility south of York Boulevard will need to be expanded to roughly double its size. In all options, taller buildings and greater density are directed towards the um, existing and planned rapid transit along Highway seven and Leslie Street. In terms of land use, all the options show the employment area west of Leslie Street to remain, since it was not part of the twenty twenty-two conversion. With these things held constant across the options, the things that do change are building height and density and the land use along the northern edge of the study area. Option one is our lowest density option, similar in intensity to other local centers in Richmond Hill. The tallest buildings max out at twenty-five stories and are located along Highway seven and Leslie Street. The land use throughout most of the area is mixed use, which provides the flexibility to accommodate a range of compatible uses. Realistically, residential uses are most likely on the above-grade floors as a weak office market is expected to continue in the future. This option explores using a strip of non-residential uses as a buffer between the employment area to the north and the mixed-use areas to the south. Non-residential uses might include retail, commercial uses, community services and facilities, office and light industrial uses. In this 3D model, you'll also see the retained employment area west of Leslie Street, the municipal offices and adjacent to the community park and civic square, the expanded stormwater pond, new streets and connections, and the existing residential condominium buildings. In option two, building heights and densities increase. There are more tall buildings along Highway seven and Leslie Street, up to a maximum of thirty stories this time, and increased building heights throughout. Along the northern edge of the study area, this option explores mixed-use, low-rise buildings set back behind a landscape buffer. The landscape buffer provides some separation from the employment uses and the potential residential uses, but less than an option one. Option three is the highest density option, approaching but not exceeding the densities of Richmond Hill's key development areas. Building heights increase up to a maximum of thirty-five stories with tall buildings introduced along the Highway four oh four corridor. Along the northern edge, mixed-use mid-rise buildings are set back behind a landscape buffer, similar to option two. Comparing the three options, you'll see that all three options exceed the minimum density target of two hundred people plus jobs per hectare. As may be expected, the residential population increases as you move from option one to two to three. The density of option three would support the broadest range of community-serving amenities. In terms of jobs, option one actually offers the most. This is because the non-residential land use along the northern edge would generate employment opportunities. In options two and three, employment-generating uses are more likely to be on the ground floor only of mixed-use buildings. So our assumption is that the above-grade floors would be residential. So this means increasing building heights and densities, therefore increases population but not jobs. And the thing that has the most impact is that land use, the land use along the northern edge. The study team hosted community workshops, both in-person and virtual, an online survey, engagement with indigenous rights holders and meetings with major landowners. From landowners, we heard that they seek to maximize the potential on their individual sites with short to medium-term development aspirations. Residents had mixed views on density, with some supportive of a more urban community and the benefits that come with that. Others strongly opposed intensification beyond the scale of what currently exists. We heard clearly that traffic and congestion, especially along Highway seven, are residents' top concerns. There's also skepticism about super-tall towers. Residents voiced support for a large central park, retention of non-residential uses along the northern edge, provision of community services and facilities, and mixed-use buildings that create a complete community. Residents urged the study team to consider phased implementation of the study plan and to consider how community-serving amenities might be delivered in an earlier phase. The recommendations from staff before you this morning are to receive the staff report for information and to refer all comments back to staff and the project team for consideration. In the next phase of work, the project team will evaluate the options and blend the best elements of each together into a preferred development concept. We will enhance the concept with additional policy directions on house, on topics like housing, environment um, and public realm. We expect to be back to present the policy directions report by, in early twenty twenty-six. We welcome your questions and comments, and members of our consultant team are on hand to respond. I'll quickly introduce our discipline leads. We have Andrew Davidge from Gladkey Planning Associates, who is the project lead, joining virtually. Brent Raymond from DTIH, Urban Design Lead, joining virtually. Chris White from Parcel, Land Economics Lead, and Catherine Gibson from SLR, Hydrogeology and Geotechnical Lead. My name is Lindsay Toth from Gladkey Planning Associates, and I am the planning lead. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you so much. Well, I think, uh, Mr. Clerk, I just want to confirm. For this presentations, uh, can the councillor have a comment here? Okay.
Uh, thank you to the Chair. Yes, that's the normal practice would be to allow questions uh, of the presenter on the presentation at this time, after which we would get to the delegations and then the actual item.
After that, that question, right?
No, no, questions on the presentation now, then delegation.
Perfect, thank you so much. So anyone have comments? Okay, uh, Mr. Uh, Mayor David West, go ahead.
Okay, um, thank you. I, I, could you just go back to slide ten for a minute? So the question I have is, um, in the, in slide ten under option three, it says density supports broadest range of population-serving amenities. Could you translate that into English and uh, explain what that actually means?
Absolutely. So in, in order to support population-serving amenities like retail, schools, libraries, there has to be a sufficient population density in the area. Because East Beaver Creek is relatively isolated from other residential areas, it's going to be a little bit of an island of population and a sea of employment areas and other uses. So that means in order to get that full range of um, community services and facilities, recreation, retail, um, shopping and restaurants, you're going to want to have enough population density there that there's enough shoppers, there's enough people going out to eat, there's enough people located there who are going to be visiting the local public library to justify those businesses choosing to locate there and also justify the municipality funding um, those services in that particular location.
Okay, thank you. I, I, that's what I thought, obviously. But I, I think, um, you know, that's in, interesting because, uh, do we have any, any um, like, okay, in the other two options, we don't, that, that's not as likely. I mean, obviously, the more density one has in a given area, the more specialty types of services and shops and amenities and all that other stuff happen. But in option one and two, is there, is there data to support that you're not likely going to get that in those two? Or is it just going to be less?
It would be less. So we do want to ensure that East Beaver Creek is built out as a complete community. So all of the densities that are shown throughout options one to three will have the basics of a complete community, um, the things that will support the necessities of daily living. Um, the difference is you will get a broader range in op, in, at the higher densities than at the lower densities. Um, so for example, in option one, some more specialty um, shops may not locate there, or there may not be sufficient population in the area to justify a school or to justify a large recreation center. So residents may need to take advantage of the excellent bus rapid transit that's available to travel to nearby areas to access some of those um, those facilities or some of those more specialty retail options.
Okay, and the, the other question I have is, um, I, I, I think I heard you say that we're not quite finished the transportation studies on this, right?
That's correct.
Is there any early indication? And/or will there be a way for us to bring into reality the, the, the impact of each of these options on this, the state of traffic? Uh, like, as it would be, like, to model, if you went with option one, this is what the, it would look like to move around that area. This is option two, this is what it would look like to move around the area. Uh, this is option three, this is what it would look like to move around the area. And the reason I'm interested in that is that, you know, I've been on council for long enough. And I know that when something like this, or even a much smaller uh, plan comes to, to council, the, the number one thing that people in the area are concerned about is that traffic is getting around. They always say that, and, and I, and I, I get it. Um, but I, I think I've been on council for long enough to know now that, like, you know, I, I just think often about this air, this um, development that was in my area that, and when I was award councillor, obviously, I had a lot to do with that as it moved through the process. And now that the, that development is built, you know, it, it makes, it makes zero difference in, in the amount of traffic that's in the area. So I've, I've, I would really like us to be able to, be able to model, what does that actually look like on the ground? Like, does it mean that it's going to be an extra twelve seconds to get out onto the main road? Or does it mean that it's going to be, you know, uh, five minutes extra to get out onto the main road? Because I think, you know, it's, it's becoming pretty clear to me that, like, not everybody in a given area leaves at the exact same time, right? They don't line up like they do at Formula One, and the light goes off and they all roar out of the building. It, they all leave at different times. And the, so I think we need to be able to understand in real terms, as much as possible, what that actually means. So have we done any of that type of work up to this point?
Through the Chair, Mr. Mayor, we've um, we do have transportation and traffic analysis that is forthcoming in the next phase of work. Um, at this point, it has been quite preliminary. Um, the transportation and traffic analysis is being undertaken by the city and their separately retained consultants. So I may just pass it to a city staff member to um, speak a bit more about the process.
Thank you. Through Mr. Chair, um, city staff is conducting a transportation analysis on, on the, on the highest density option right now, based on the, um, sorry, thank you, um, the amount of budget and the time that we have. So we, the um, project was designed so that we can complete it within the timeframe and the budget that we have. We are not able to do modeling, specific modeling exercises for all three options, but we are doing the modeling exercise for the highest density and preferred option.
Okay. All right, I'll look forward to seeing that data when it comes out. So thank you very much.
Any more questions, Mayor? Okay. Next one, um, councillor Xu.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the presentation. Uh, much appreciate that, and um, is an excellent work for this secondary plan. And I'm very pleased that for the concept of planning for the entire area on both sides of the East Beaver Creek, uh, rather than only focusing on the small parcel between E, EBC and Leslie. So uh, my first question is quite interesting because I noticed that at the height of our municipal building looks different in three options. Uh, does that mean that it may get taller depending on which option we choose? Here's I checked the, option three, our building is more taller than option one. So I'm just curious about this.
Through the Chair, to the councillor, um, as we are aware, there are no development plans for the municipal offices. Um, in option three, it does look like they are taller. And that is just to show that um, theoretically, the permissions for building on properties throughout the area, including this property, would be increased. So um, theoretically, there, there would be additional permissions if there was additional density on the site desired. Um, but we are aware that there are not plans for that at the current moment.
Okay, thank you. Uh, understood. Uh, through Mr. Chair, my second question is about the three options. I know, I know some of my nearby neighbors may not agree with me personally. To be honest, I don't think option one is realistic because I understand the option one is meets the minimum requirement set by the provincial government, but it's not enough for option one because we have a target set by the provincial government that we have to meet the target of twenty-seven thousand new units by twenty thirty-one. My next question is, are you sure that the option one can meet the minimum requirements set by the provincial government? Because we have a target to meet. Through Mr. Chair.
Um, through the Chair, are you, sorry, question for the councillor. Are you referring to the, the minimum density targets for the PMTSAs or the, the housing?
Uh, the housing, both.
Housing target?
Both.
Um, we have not done an assessment of the housing target. Um, that sort of is a broader growth management um, analysis. However, there is some of that coming in the next phase of work that just hasn't been completed yet. Um, right now, they, um, the options one to three, they look at what the official plan says about local centers and the uh, level of development and intensification in housing that's appropriate in local centers. And that is the policy framework um, within which we have developed the three options. Um, but there will be more analysis on that. But in terms of the minimum densities for the PMTSAs, um, there are provincial targets, and then there are also more specific regional targets for these two PMTSAs that comprise the study area. Um, and based on our modeling of how this study area could evolve in the three options, all three of those do meet the minimum, exceed the minimum density targets.
Okay, understood. Uh, for my personal option, personally, to be honest, I think option two and three will be more realistic and have us to meet the requirement set by the provincial government and the York Regional Government. And because there's a lot of lands east of Beaver Creek could support more thoughtful and larger-scale development. That's my opinion. And also the reason this development is so tricky because there are already two residential building within the EBC and Leslie already. So it makes things complicated. So in the presentation and also in the report, we see the overall numbers for the density and, and, and building heights for each part uh, in, 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 in overall only. But there's not any figures to, to have the figures in each part, like west of Leslie, like between the EBC and Leslie and east of EBC. What is specific number for the each density and population size? Is it possible to have some more specific data for each block of the development? Through Mr. Chair.
Uh, yes, through the Chair, um, it would be possible to have that breakdown when we come to the preferred development concept. We do, we do sort of have those numbers, they're just some more background. Um, but those densities by block are what inform the overall population and job um, estimates that we had on the, on the slide deck.
Okay, uh, through Mr. Chair, is it possible, could the future planning take a more uneven approach? Like keeping the FSI between Leslie and EBC lower, under three? And the maximum building height should be um, under um, less than fifteen stories? And for the part of east of EBC, we can build more higher and more dense there. Is it possible to build such approach like this, an uneven approach?
Through the Chair, we will examine and evaluate the three options, which really just presents the range of opportunities. Um, so we'll be evaluating those in the next phase based on inputs from our technical subconsultants plus all of the feedback that we heard from residents and landowners and other interested and affected parties. Um, that will inform the evaluation of the options and the eventual preferred development concept. So we will take that um, comment back and, and consider it in the next phase.
Okay, good to know. Um, my next question is about the definition of this uh, project, the secondary plan. Now, I understand this is only, it's still considering as a local center. Why still keep it as a local center rather than a KDA? Does that mean that it's not appropriate for develop this piece of land as a KDA? Is it right?
Through the Chair, um, I can confirm that our scope for the study has only considered this area as a local center because that is how it is identified within the city's official plan. Um, however, I may pass this off to city staff for some additional comment just about the process.
Through you, Mr. Chair, um, as Lindsay mentioned, currently approved in the city's official plan as the city's structure, this area has been identified as a local center. So that's how this project is scoped, based on current policies. Um, and I do want to note that, though, all three of the options currently that are being proposed, the height and density, they are a little bit higher than our existing local centers, given the context and the character of the EBC. they are a little bit higher than our existing local centers, given the context and the character of the E B C area. So those have been considered. So that's that's where we're at in terms of the project and that's why it's the analysis is based on a local center. But with the consideration that it's appropriate to go higher than the existing local centers in the city.
Okay, I see. Okay, so uh, this all my question at this moment and I will leave the rest of them in the item eleven point two. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you so much. Uh, next one, Counselor Dixon.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, thank you for the presentation. I'm always confused when we talk about East Beaver Creek about the Sheridan Hotel and their application. Can you explain to me where it fits in here? Or what its status is compared to every other place in this area?
Um, I'll let city staff take this question as well.
Through you, Mr. Chair, um, the the development application is being processed concurrently with this with the secondary plan um, project being conducted, but it's two separate process. So um, the secondary plan will take into consideration of all landowners and stakeholders and residents comments. Um, but the two, the application and the study are being conducted separately at the same time.
So through you, Mr. Chair, I think we all know that the application requests densities far higher than even option three. So how how do we make it transparent for residents that even though we're talking about option three, there's things on the table here that are much denser, higher? And remind me, is is the is the um, Sheridan application covered by this secondary plan or is it a totally separate thing? This is always foggy for me. I look forward to clarification once and for all.
Through you, Mr. Chair, the Sheridan property, the lands are within the secondary plan study area. Um, they have submitted their own site-specific application before the secondary plan was initiated. So that's why they have their own application going forward, but their lands are within the study area of the secondary plan. So staff have been consulting with all major landowners, stakeholders and residents that are and that will be impacted by the secondary plan and we will continue to do so. So we are hearing comments and concerns from all landowners and those will all be taken into consideration as we develop the secondary plan.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the explanation. Again, I just want to make sure that we there's nothing in here in this in this presentation that mentions the Sheridan and I want to make sure residents in the area understand that option three, even the highest densities, the Sheridan is also in play here. I I just want to make sure we're transparent with residents. So there's no surprises, whatever we whatever direction we go with the secondary plan. So thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, just to provide some further clarity, uh, there was an application for an official plan amendment application by the Sheridan landowners. They've since uh, submitted an actual zoning bylaw amendment application. So in order to provide clarity, as the counselor is asking, there will be another public meeting coming up. It's tentatively scheduled for November the twenty fifth. So we will be able to provide the residents with the additional information that the red, the uh, the applicant is proposing. They've slightly modified their proposal. So we have this coming forward as a secondary plan and that application coming forward in November. So the uh, the transparency will be there.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any further questions? No, perfect. Next one, our um, District Counselor Dipalo, go ahead.
No, thank you. And um, I I just just have a question. It's unfortunate this P M T S A is on a municipal boundary. So really it's just half of the P M T S A. Are you taking into account what's happening on the south side of Highway seven? Have you? Are are is there any effort to to match what what's going on south here?
Through the chair, um, we have considered the context south of Highway seven, which is located within the city of Markham. Um, currently it is designated employment in the city of Markham's official plan. The city of Markham is in the early stages of reviewing this area as part of their official plan review. Um, but as of right now, it is employment, um, and that's sort of the existing condition as well. Employment hotel commercial uses in sort of a low-rise format. Um, in terms of the density targets for the PMTSAs, our understanding is that um, the city of Richmond Hill must ensure that their lands within that sort of shared P M T S A um, are meeting the minimum density requirements. And then the city of Markham ensures that their lands through their updated planning process will meet that minimum density target for the area south of Highway seven. So as long as both municipalities are playing their part, then we reach that minimum density target.
Good, thank you.
Thank you so much. Next one, um, Counselor Silvies.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, my my comment was very similar to um, to Counselor Dipalos. And that is, and good morning, everybody, and thank you for the presentation. Um, uh, about Markham, I mean, I know they're a separate municipality to us, but they they generally have um, uh, much greater targets than we do and they're not as conservative as we are. So my my concern was the same is even though we're a separate municipality, we're all in the same region and um, do discuss, through you, Mr. Chair, do discussions continue uh, between municipalities in an area such as this, which is bordered by um, the four oh four and Highway seven um, and Leslie onto four oh seven. Um, it's such a massively uh, transited area. Um, at what point does York region um, play a role here if that can be answered in this forum? Through you, Mr. Chair.
Through the chair to the counselor, there are conversations um, between the three municipalities, the region of York, the city of Markham and the city of Richmond Hill through this project to coordinate on a number of matters, including many of those that you've mentioned. Um, but also including matters of infrastructure, um, below-grade infrastructure and transportation. So we do have several forums by which we are collaborating and we expect that as we progress the secondary plan and get into some of these more technical matters, more one-on-one conversations with representatives from both the region and the city of Markham will continue to ensure that our efforts um, in planning for this area are coordinated.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, I think it's very important and I'm sure that our our three regional representatives um, carry the um, carry the discussion forward um, in the best interests of of Richmond Hill. But we are in a quandary here because of where this is situated. I do tend to agree um, with the discussion that um, why is this a local center and not a K D A? I mean, I I think if we if we looked at this as a K D A, as opposed to an an a local center, then I think I believe the discussion of heights and densities becomes something completely different. So um, that that's just a comment by by myself. I understand we have to um, we have to do everything according to the Planning Act and uh, and to the provinces' whims. But um, I I'm just wondering if through you, Mr. Chair, and I don't know that this this can actually be answered perhaps to the commissioner. Should this be considered a K D A as opposed to a local center? Because when I compare this to, say, the K D A that's in uh, in my ward and ward six um, at at Young Sixteenth Carville, we're looking at something that is way, way more um, more intensified, uh, given its given its its position. Um, we're looking at something that's way more intensified than than even that. And that is, that's huge. And then we have the Richmond Hill Center right at the bottom, which could possibly uh, be a comparison here. And 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 I I believe that this is something that everybody, especially our established residents um, need to really understand because of the situational uh, position of this particular area. It's um, it's 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 huge in in what is ultimately going to come come there. Um, so that that's just a comment. I don't know that there's a that there's a discussion perhaps through you, Mr. Chair, the commissioner can assist us with that as to where where it becomes a K D A, where it becomes a local center. Um, I I would appreciate that. Through you.
Uh, through you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, what I'll say to the the counselor is that uh, obviously council has set us on a course uh, for uh, the hierarchy of the different development areas of the city. This area was defined defined as a local center. That's what council directed us to do. And that's the nature of the work that the consultant and the staff have undertaken to provide uh, different scenarios for that type of development. Uh, we are not thinking of the area as a pure K D A area. Obviously, if that is something council would decide to undertake, it would involve a different uh, set of parameters for a study to move forward. That's not what we've we've been directed to do. So at this time, within the hierarchy of the official plan, this area is a local center. It's going to be on the very high side of what we already have in the city. And that's the work that the the staff has undertaken.
Thank you, Commissioner. I I appreciate that and I I believe it's also very important for the residents, the established residents to understand that. Um, because this is a a direction and or a directive from um, the municipality. Just my my last comment, uh, my last comment is this, I I really want to commend the local counselor, Counselor Xu for his statements prior prior to mine with regards to options one, two and three. And his his clear understanding of what these different options mean with regard to this specific area. And um, and it's very difficult for a local counselor to to acknowledge something like that because of the pressures and the stresses that are put on us as local counselors um, from our residents and which which are completely valid. However, this is an area that is in total flux and it's going to go spread through decades of of development, much like our Richmond Hill Center and uh, the Sixteenth Carville uh, young area. So um, I think if we focus on what we have at the moment and are moving forward on that, I think that is the that's the most important thing for our residents to remember. And um, I I just wanted to publicly mention that I believe Counselor Xu is doing an excellent job here under some very challenging circumstances. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Counselor Silvies. Next one, our Deputy Mayor, Godwin Chen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you uh, for the presentation. I'm going to only talking about seeking clarification on the presentation. I reserve my comments when the item will come up for discussion. Um, and I'm looking at the, I know this is only uh, graphical rendition, so to speak, option one, two and three. And uh, local culture actually mentioned about uh, municipal building in terms of perceived height. And it draws my attention actually to the very southeast corner that is between East Beaver Creek bang in the north in the Norman Perfume Avenue, also then for for another side on Highway seven. Now, my question is, it appears to me in that particular cauldron, one, two, option one and two is like seven to eight is kind of very, very much look alike. I mean, five-story, I know allow for max. But boom, all of a sudden in option three, in slide number nine, it all pops up like uh, 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 on the east side of um, East Beaver Creek, you're nodding. Is there any reason for that or is it is going to transform also the height there because of possibility to Highway seven? Through Mr. Chair.
Through the chair, I might invite our urban design lead Brent Raymond to respond to this question. He's joining virtually.
Oh, okay.
Hi, hi, Lindsay. Um, um, and through the chair, could you? There's a lot within that question.
Question, yeah.
Yes, please.
Okay. Thank you. Through the chair, the simple question is, if you compare to slide number nine to uh, seven and eight on the north or southeast corner between east of East Beaver Creek and northern boundary is Norman Perfume Avenue and south is kind of four, four and seven. I'm seeing that the building looks like they're like matching boxes, like stood up as compared to seven to eight. So I'd like to get some clarification through Mr. Chair. Does that mean we need the thirty-five story, whatever buildings are meant to be there? In addition to other ones on the west side of uh, East Beaver Creek as well? Does that help?
That does. Uh, through Mr. Chair. So again, these these options are representing tests. It's not necessarily a selection. Um, the next stage of work will refine what the height regime is for the towers, but the the fundamental difference between the three options is that um, there are more towers and they're taller. So uh, in option one, where we don't have any tall buildings in that part of the study area, it's all mid-rise. Uh, obviously, the the density is lower. All of the blocks are the same in each of those sites. Um, the distribution of the height is generally towards Highway seven and and towards the the highway uh, with some additional height um, located within. But there's certainly room for making adjustments to where the height is. Some of the buildings may be taller, some of them may be shorter, but what the test gives us is an idea of how many people and jobs might be in that space. And that helps to inform the transportation work. It helps to inform the the servicing work as well, all of the technical studies. Was that helpful?
Thank you for the answer. I'm just reacting to the slides being presented and seek clarification. Now, uh, I'm also looking at where this arrow pointing down to those high towers on the uh, west side of um, or in this case, left uh, side of the slide, residential mixed use. And would that be also applied to those tall buildings on the in the area I just mentioned, the cauldron meaning east of East Beaver Creek, the same cauldron? Does that mean because it looks like the same kind of salmon-like color? So those are meant to be residential mixed use as well? Is that correct? Just to clarify, through Mr. Chair.
Through the chair, yes, that is correct. All the buildings that are sort of orange salmon-colored are residential mixed use. Um, and as I noted in the presentation, that's likely um, some sort of retail or commercial small-scale office use at grade and residential above.
Okay, um, well, maybe there's something I could comment later on, but if that is the case and just clarify, the character of the area to me is change because right now that is an entertainment area, so to speak. You have the cinema, you have all those restaurants. Um, and and you have um, other retail, uh, you know, grab your sandwich, wherever. So anyway, I would I would uh, reserve it until we discuss the item, but the whole character of that area is quote unquote, no longer entertainment area. That's the comment I just wanted to make. Uh, sorry, you have a response to that through Mr. Chair?
Through the chair, yes. Um, I just wanted to clarify that the at-grade, the mixed-use designation would permit those entertainment uses still um, within a format of a mixed-use building.
Thank you. No more questions for clarification. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay, there are no one. I'm going to have a question here as well. Uh, my question is very simple regarding to the infrastructures. I see whenever it's option one and two and three, they require the transit, public transit, also the personal transit as well. So look at the entire area. We only have two streets for now, if I'm correct. The first one is York, York, this is the York Lower. The second one is the uh, on the north side, there is one street. In the future, just whenever it's option here, we have a lot of buildings. You can consider rush hour, right? So the school bus there as well, many kids gonna take it to school bus. Also, people driving from their condominium to go to Highway seven or the others. Also, maybe public transit. So what is in the design? Are there gonna be have more new roads to support this one?
Yes, so through the, oh, to the chair, um, would it be possible to get um, the slide with the block structure?
Number six, slide six.
Yes, thank you. So all of the proposed movement network on this slide. So all of the proposed movement network on this slide, we are still determining in consultation with city transportation staff and their separately retained transportation consultant, which of these sort of light dotted lines are going to be public streets, new public streets? Which might be mid-block connections or private lanes, pedestrian paths? But the idea is to create a much more dense network of streets and ways to move about to provide opportunities for new buildings to front onto those streets and also to provide many more route choices for people getting around and moving through this area. That's going to benefit pedestrians and cyclists and people using active transportation because it gives them different ways to move about. It gives them options to vary their route and make it more enjoyable on a day-to-day basis. It also will present more opportunities for people driving as well to choose different routes and to sort of have more roads, more options for people moving about and through the area that way.
Okay, maybe it's the earlier stage because I see this is really compact areas. Maybe in the future, public services regarding to waste collections, snow services, and also others, ambulance as well, emergency services. I hope there's enough space. Remember, I see some designs along the Highway Seven and Young Street. So there's only one single lane in and out, so in case of public parking on the street. So fire services or ambulance has challenge go inside. So that might be a future one, I'm going to see more details. So I don't have further comments, anyone else? Okay, no, so we need to receive the representation. Can I have a councillor to receive the motion? Okay, our mayor did advise, all in favor? Okay, all in favor, thank you so much. So this passed. Next one is delegation. So today we have four delegations, so let's start from first one. So Lauren Capalongo, Malong Given Parsons Limited regarding to this development, East Beaver Creek. Please go ahead.
Good morning, members of committee. My name is Lauren Capalongo. I'm a land use planner in principle with the firm Malong Given Parsons. And I'm here on behalf of Sheridan Parkway Hotels and Convention Centers to speak to with respect to the background report and the land use options that are before you this morning for the East Beaver Creek secondary plan. Sheridan is actually very pleased to see that the secondary plan work is advancing for this area. It has been more than three years since the lands were converted as part of the regional official plan process from that employment land to something else community. And so we're really pleased to see that a new framework is being developed by your staff for this area. Today, we have been participating in the city's secondary plan process. We've attended the online community consultation meetings and we attended the landowner group meeting that was held between city staff and Sheridan as well as other major landowners in the area. We've also had some initial conversations with policy staff and we've had some discussions about continuing that dialogue as we continue to move forward through the secondary plan process, so all positive. The initial background report in the concept plans that are before you this morning are a great first step in the secondary plan process. But what we're finding is that it seems to lack the consideration of elevating this area to a key development area, which some of the council members have correctly identified this morning. I've been before this committee several times in the past, delegating, providing those written submissions to provide our opinion on why we believe that this area should be more than a key, more than a local center represents and meets all the criteria that the city has for a key development area. I deputed back in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, sorry, when the official plan review process was underway. And there was a conversation on this committee floor about when the appropriate time would be to look at this area. And the discussion on the floor was that we should do this as part of the secondary plan process. I did delegate again in last October, twenty twenty-four, when there was an initial staff report brought forward on initiating the secondary plan. And the response to our request was through a policy memo from staff to council, which noted that this KDA status could be considered as part of the secondary plan process. So after making those submissions, Sheridan was left with the impression that there would be at least some consideration for this area as a KDA through the secondary plan process. And we're a little disappointed to see that it doesn't seem to have actually translated through some of the initial background work that's happened to date. As part of those landowner consultation meetings that I mentioned that occurred earlier in September, the landowners actually collectively raised this issue with city staff. And the response we were given was that staff don't seem to have the necessary direction to look at this and consider this as appropriate as a KDA as part of that secondary plan process. So this morning, I'm here once again to ask that council consider providing the necessary direction to staff that is part of the secondary plan process. They do consider this at least, or give some thought to the fact that this should be a key development area. As we all know, secondary plans are a more finite level, micro-level detail analysis planning process that we, you know, we're working on here to ensure the best outcome for the lenders and the existing residents that are here. We want to make sure that the framework that we're developing here has the appropriate considerations for the long-term success of this area and delivering as much needed community services that were noted earlier this morning. And Sheridan does have some thoughts on that through our application. We've even proposed some public work, sort of pop space here for providing that parkland for the community. So again, we're just asking here that council provide that necessary direction and clarity to staff to allow this area to be considered a KDA through the secondary plan process. So that concludes my delegation this morning, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Okay, thank you so much. And next delegation, Vincent Chin on behalf of YR ICCC nine seven two and YR ICCC one zero eight, board of directors.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Mayor, and councillors of the committee. The board of directors of the YR ICCC nine seventy-two and one zero zero eight represent about seventy percent of the residents in the East Beaver Creek area. That's about fif, we represent about fifteen hundred residents living in nine zero one five and nine zero one seven street, Leslie Street. We support the secondary plan process for East Beaver Creek to guide growth development, management, and to provide an informed approach to planning for higher population densities. In due course, council will be required to approve multimillion-dollar investments in municipal infrastructure such as roads, transportation, sewer, water and waste water capacities, schools, community centers, library, parks to cope with more people and cars in the East Beaver Creek area. We believe the secondary plan will provide a fact-based and comprehensive way to assess the cumulative impacts of growth on the infrastructure of the area. It will identify what is required to build a complete community at EBC. This is what is in the official plan. We want to build a complete community, meaning that there's facilities, there's parks. You don't just build buildings to cram people there. You need support services, all these amenities to go with it. We applaud this secondary plan process and congratulate staff on a very well-written, balanced report. The secondary plan, we hope, will form the basis upon which future and current development applications can be objectively assessed. Therefore, council must allow the East Beaver Creek secondary plan to be fully developed until completion before considering any applications for development in the area. Your allocation of two million dollars, you may recall, a year ago, you allocated two million dollars to this project to expedite the completion of this project. And we believe this is a good investment and its outcomes should be heated. Additionally, we support the following findings in the report and the background report just presented. Each of the three land use options meets and exceeds the minimum population density and jobs per hectare as stated in the provincial planning statement with EBC as a local center. Number two, the report already stated that this, these options, any three of, any one of these three options would ensure balanced growth throughout the city's structure. EBC, East Beaver Creek, should not absorb a significant share of the city's projected housing growth. There are other areas in the city that can be intensified in its development. Let's not just focus on this small parcel of land owned by Sheridan. That, for instance, councillor Xu mentioned, what about east of East Beaver Creek? Between East Beaver Creek and four four, there's a huge piece of land there. Let's spread the growth in the area. Number three, the highest density and tallest building heights are generally proposed to be directed along Highway Seven and Leslie Street. We fully support that. At the, at the community workshop, which about seventy residents from the two buildings attended, we fully participated in the consultation process. And we support option one, actually. And the residents, I note that in the report, it also talk about the survey results that they received and the report that they received from the focus group discussion during the community workshop. It's an overwhelming support for option one. And we support option one with the maximum height. We would like to move down the maximum height of the, for option one. It was proposed as twenty-five story. We would even suggest lowering it to fifteen story for the lands to the south of Highway, south of our two condo buildings.
Your time's out, so please drop up. Thank you so much.
Okay. We propose that the remainder of the East Beaver Creek study area may be considered for heights higher than fifteen stories, especially for the area again, Highway four four and Highway seven area. Thank you very much, council.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Chen. The next one, Winnie Wong, nine zero seventeen Leslie Street regarding to the East Beaver Creek secondary plan.
Good morning, Mr. Mayors, Chairs, and Council members. I wish to extend my gratitude, my extend my gratitude to the city planners and gladly planning associate for their hard work in developing this plan. I want to express my sincere appreciation for the East Beaver Creek secondary plan and the positive change it might bring to our community. My family and I are very pleased with the concept and idea present. And I deeply appreciate the time and effort you have all dedicated to this endeavor. When the EBC secondary plan was proposed by the city council last year and a decision was made to allocate nearly two million dollars to expedite the study plan schedule, I place my trust in the city council, believing that this secondary plan would effectively balance the anticipated population growth with the quality of life for the resident of this area. I respectfully implore the city council to embrace, uphold, and adhere to to the principle outlined in this secondary plan. Given the significant investment of time and resources, I kindly request that you fully utilize this plan and honor the commitment made when it was initially proposed. Although I do not, I do not personally know any regional councillor or mayor, but I vote for you, all because I believe you will be a trustworthy individual who will, who will deliver on your promises. Similarly, I once again place my trust in the city council regarding the EBC secondary plan. And I hope this study plan will serve as a blueprint for the community. I believe all my neighbors would also like to see the positive change in this area. I've been living in this neighborhood for over fourteen years without access to any amenity. I have three girls. My children didn't have a park and library when they were little, but I really hope my grandchildren will. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Next one, Milisha Raja. So the plant-based treaty regarding the plant-treated initiative.
Good morning, Mayor, members of council, staff, and guests. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm Namisha Raja, volunteer coordinator with the Plant-Based Treaty, and I'm joined by my fellow volunteers and Marta from Climate Action Richmond Hill. We're here today to ask council to support the Plant-Based Treaty by voting in favor of the motion that will be tabled by councillor Thompson later during this meeting. We know the city has already taken important steps towards addressing the climate crisis. We appreciate Richmond Hill's forward-thinking approach in dealing with climate change. We already have so much in common. We are aligned with several of Richmond Hill's stated sustainability goals such as Richmond Hill's local food initiatives, the city's commitment to reducing greenhouse gas emissions to net zero by 2050, and its environment strategy that prioritizes food security and urban forest expansion. As you know, we've been working with your sustainability staff, Ruth Threnden, Miles O'Brien, who've been absolutely fantastic to work with. In fighting climate change, our food system as a contributor often gets overlooked. Even if we stopped burning fossil fuels tomorrow, we would still not be able to solve the climate crisis unless we also address the damage caused by animal agriculture. This is because raising animals for food is a leading driver of greenhouse gas emissions, deforestation, water shortages, and biodiversity loss. The good news is each and every one of us can be a part of the solution. Three times a day, when we sit down for a meal, each resident of Richmond Hill can make a direct impact by choosing more plant-based meals that will help our climate, protect our health, and create a more sustainable community for our children and grandchildren. And this is where Plant-Based Treaty can help. Let me take the new, next few slides to introduce who we are, what we do, and how City of Richmond Hill can partner with us to reach our mutual sustainability goals. Next slide, please, oh, thank you. To promote a shift, our mission is to promote a shift towards a just plant-based food system that would enable us to live safely within our planetary boundaries and reforest the earth. Our vision is a global plant-based treaty attached to the Paris Agreement and best practices in plant-based food policy implemented by cities and other institutions. To date, we've had three Richmond Hill councillors personally endorse the Plant-Based Treaty and hope that once you become more familiar with our organization, you will too. So far, fifty-one cities, towns, and regions have endorsed the Plant-Based Treaty around the world that include Amsterdam, Edinburgh, and Los Angeles. By supporting the Plant-Based Treaty, Richmond Hill would be joining a global movement of cities that are committing to healthier and climate-friendly food systems, including the GTA municipalities of Brampton, Calleden, and most recently, Mississauga. This is not only just about emissions cuts, it's about local benefits. This would include better health outcomes and less strain on our healthcare resources, affordable nutritious food choices for families, more resilient local food systems, and economic opportunity for plant-based businesses and innovation. We would be thrilled to have City of Richmond Hill as the first municipality in York region to lead the way towards a more sustainable food system. Richmond Hill has already shown this leadership by hosting the Sustainability Speaker Series events, councillor Thompson's EcoFest, and partnering with organizations such as the United Nations University Institute for Water, Environment, and Health, York Region Food Network, Climate Action Richmond Hill, and LEAF. Partnering with Plant-Based Treaty just enhances those relationships as we are aligned with many of these organizations' goals as well. Our Plant-Based Treaty team has tabled at several Richmond Hill events, including the Mayor's Maple Syrup Festival and EcoFest, where we received many endorsements from Richmond Hill residents. By supporting the Plant-Based Treaty, you will allow us non-binding permission to partner with Richmond Hill and give city staff assurance that they have council's backing in participating with us in education opportunities, film screenings, cooking demos, and other such activities that would support environmental stewardship. We're excited and ready to work with you. We have developed resources that can assist you in customizing initiatives for Richmond Hill that support your environmental goals. Thank you once again for giving us this opportunity to speak and present. And I'm happy to take any questions if there are any.
Thank you so much. Okay, so next item, I believe, Ms. Clark. So eleven point two is an extract of a record. Do I need a motion to move that one? Can I have movers for the section eleven point two for the East Beaver Creek? Can I have movers for the uh the section eleven point two for the East Beefeath Creek Secondary Plan? Okay, uh councillor Xu, more than all in favor? Okay, let's discuss, okay?
Yeah, yeah, discuss.
Okay, so yeah, would you mind go ahead?
Yes, thank you, uh Mr. Chair. Uh first of all, I would like to uh express my sincere gratitude to the planning team once again for this excellent work on the secondary plan local center. Uh just mentioned by uh Commissioner Glanis before, uh a Sony amendment application for this area between Leslie and EBC was completed in mid-September. So does this have any impact on these on this ongoing secondary plan through Mr. Chair?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Uh as noted before um by by the consultant speaking to the uh application for the Sheridan property, obviously that's uh something that we have to take into consideration as part of the secondary plan work. Uh the two appu- the the application and the secondary plan are moving uh in concert with each other, but they're separate processes. And we have to take into consideration what the applicant is proposing for their property, along with what we want to uh recommend to council ultimately for the larger area.
So uh through Mr. Chair, uh based on my knowledge, the application contains uh eight towers just between, just focusing on the area between the EBC and Leslie. Uh the tallest building will be forty-nine stories. It's a big difference between what we are going on here, because the secondary plan, even the option three, the maximum building height is thirty-five stories only. So there's a big contrast and big difference. So how do you, how do you make this difference, this gap more narrow? And can the city run both at the same time?
Uh through you, uh Mr. Chairman to the councillor. So again, the the application is coming in with a specific proposal, and you are correct, the revised application is for eight apartment buildings ranging in height from thirty nine thirty-nine to forty-nine stories on that specific property. So um we have to tread carefully here. There was gonna ultimately be a recommendation for the secondary plan put forward to council with a preferred option from staff for council to make a decision for what they want for the greater area. But there will also be a recommendation that comes forward for the specific application itself. One will inform the other and vice versa. So we will be coming to council with recommendations for both of them. We haven't figured out the exact timing. I believe the consultant said they'd try to be back in Q one of twenty twenty-six with respect to the secondary plan. We're coming back to council for a public meeting on the applications themselves on November the twenty-fifth. So we'll try to coordinate the timing of recommendations for both items. But there will be separate discussion points for the application, site-specific application and the secondary plans themselves. And we'll try to do our best to uh to uh bring forward a recommendation to council that supports the vision that staff has for the area.
Understood. Uh my next question is, um I understand the sub-site just mentioned by some of my colleagues before, uh the sub-site of Highway seven, uh doesn't fall within the boundary of our city. But um I just wondering, from the city's perspective, is there any difference between the south and north of the Highway seven in terms of a high high-rise development from your perspective through Mr. Chair?
Uh through you, Mr. Chairman to the councillor. Uh as was noted by the consultant, um Markham is actually behind uh us at this time in terms of their OP review. They're looking into that area. Uh what differences there may ultimately be, I I really can't comment at this point in time. They have to meet the same density targets that we do. Uh how they actually put that out and where on which properties, that is something that they will have to determine through their exercise and ultimately the decision by their council.
Uh thank you. Uh but in my opinion, the north and the sub-site of Highway seven have a very different landscape. On the north side in our city, we already have a hotel. We already, we already have a shopping mall, a conference center and two residential building already. And this are not going anywhere. So any future high-rise development would have to work around them. That's why it doesn't make sense to directly compare it with the sub-site or expect the same level of density in the future planning. That's my opinion. We can't compare the south side of the 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 Highway seven because there's nothing there, but we have a hotel, we have a two residential building. So that's different, that's not comparable. That's my opinion. And also, uh talking about the the possible, the potential KDA, maybe just change to KDA. Uh I have to quote some of the comments in the staff report. Uh on the staff report, page eleven. The city's OP provides a comprehensive framework to manage growth. In this regard, staff have revealed the land use option and pro- and proposed densities from a growth management perspective, recognizing that EBC is not the only area within the city that will experience growth and and asification. In order to ensure the balanced growth throughout the city structure, EBC should not absorb a significant share of the city's structure. And most importantly is is not ambition at the same level of the incentive intensity as area that are served by subway infrastructure. Because EBC is not directly served by subway infrastructure. So we cannot compare for those KDA in in uh in uh Young and Sixteen and Young and Bernard, we can compare there because we don't have subway served in the future here. This is a very particular case in this area. So I hope all of my council colleagues and also the planning team to take it into consideration that we cannot compare with the other KDA in this situation. So I would say this land, this piece of land is is not appropriate to be built as a KDA. That's why we have to talk about here. And please take this in in into the considerations. And also, um overall, in the conclusion, I would like to express my sincere gratitude again to the planning staff and let the staff just keep going and working on this secondary plan local center, in my opinion. Because this is our, this was our decision, our own decision. We have to respect our own decision last time to just keep going on because we have spent the two million dollars part of this already. And this is tax-based money. We have to respect our own decision last time. So just keep going and let the staff to keep working on this secondary plan local center destination. That's my all comment. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, councillor uh Thompson?
Uh thank you. Through you, the chair. Uh I guess I I could have asked this question, uh you know, after the presentation, but I think this is a question that's uh better asked to staff, and that is when we looked at those three options, uh and and I agree with councillor Chu that option one, really all it does is meet minimum requirements. And that would suggest to me that when you're looking at it from a transportation standpoint, uh people will still have to get in their cars on a a day-to-day basis. So there's gonna be quite the impact to transportation in the area with option one. Option two would seem to me that it's better, it does provide more community options which may require people to uh get in their vehicles or or get onto transportation less. Uh but option three obviously was designed to be more of a complete community, in which case this would be the minimal amount of time that people would actually have to uh either get in a vehicle or resort to other transportation needs. So from a transportation standpoint, for the process that we're gonna be uh going through uh moving forward, I I'd like to get a sense as to whether the study will provide us with some form of measurable impact on what transportation movement would look like under all three of those options. Would that be something that will come back as part of that study?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. If I could refer the question, I I believe it was partially answered by a consultant, but if I could refer that back to uh either director Flores and her staff or our consultant?
Through the chair. Um yes, our consultant did um refer refer to that. There will be um subsequent work done uh with respect to sensitivity analysis on transportation and servicing. With respect to um each of the options, um there is, I think um our manager had alluded to it as well. Given the timing of of the study and the resources available, we will be taking a look at the highest option. Um and I believe um, you know, a number of measures will be considered as well in terms of traffic and transportation demand management. I don't have any of the details at this moment, but um all of those things will be taken into consideration.
Okay, I appreciate the answer. So I guess basically I'll leave it as a a comment that what I think would be useful for for council would be if we could get some sort of sense of a a measurable impact uh for each of those options. So even if it's just a forecast that says this is what we're likely to look at with option one, here's what it's likely going to be with option two. Here's what you can expect with option three. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay, next one, council, or that regional councillor Joe DiPaolo?
Uh thank you very much. Um and I I wanna uh thank the uh the the consultant team here from Glad Gladkey Planning Associates for uh the all the work that's done uh on the secondary plan. Um I I think we were, as a as a council and here in the city, we're very responsive to the to the concerns that were raised originally with uh with an application that we have that's for it's um four to five years in on in in the in the formal application process and we uh we require the applicant to wait for a a secondary plan process. And then that's what we're going uh into now and we um yeah, I I'm glad to hear our planning commissioner say that the the application will inform the secondary plan, the secondary plan will in will in will inform the application. Those those two things are happening and it um that's 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 it's quite normal. That's we we've had a lot of uh major secondary plans that were were driven, like at Young and Seven originally, uh the Baby Glen development by by applications that were existing. And that's a, it's 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 something that um is is a very, very normal and complimentary to to do and go forward. And um I I I really um strongly want wanted to and want to accommodate the request that's being made for this to be um upgraded to a KDA. But I I I I think when you ask for that, you have to be careful, uh because I think it would further delay this existing application. I think if if we were to redesignate to a KDA, that would would require an entirely different process that uh uh you know, we'd we'd have to go back and and uh even take more time. I I am encouraged by what was said that this this isn't this is a local center that's going to be a lot larger than our other local centers that I'm encouraged that the um third option is being uh, you know, recommended uh by our staff and and there is a recognition that the the density here um can be higher and right up to and and very close to uh what what's proposed in the KDAs. But at Young and Sixteenth and and Bernard KDAs, you know, we have a clear hierarchy, but if you take take Bernard, for example, it it's uh gonna be well-served by public transit with the bus rapid transit, which is the same as Highway seven. But it's not as easily accept accessible as you are right on the four oh seven and four oh four. You know, the the um vehicle traffic in and out of this area is going to be so much better than 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 uh the vehicle traffic getting in and out of Young and Bernard. But the the public transit services are even better because, you know, the province leased out the actual roadway of the four oh seven, but the province owns a wide swath uh on both sides of the four oh seven that it's it's proposed to have additional bus for bus rapid transit. And the the proximity to Young and Seven subways, the the two stations, one one that's right between seven and four oh seven, um this is, this is better serviced than Young and Bernard. Let's just face it, for public transit and for vehicle transit. So um when when we have um the all of the economic benefits that come along with with an application for a world-class conference center, there has to be uh some some recognition that this is desirable um beyond uh you know, a a typical application and that that we need to make concessions in order to derive that enormous economic benefit. The um, you know, putting putting Richmond Hill on the map somewhat. If if you look at the Toronto, Metro Toronto Convention Center on Front Street, uh you know, it's the same same thing where you have good good public transit and and good roads. But the the traffic disappears. They have five thousand people uh going going into that convention center. They have the capacity for for five thousand people at a time um in those ballrooms. And the the traffic just disappears underground. And with with the massive underground infrastructure that's being proposed with this application, I I think it's, you know, it's beneficial for the city to try to accommodate the the application as presented. But do this excellent secondary plan exercise so that um the the surrounding area is going to have the amenities it requires as well.
Thank you so much. Uh uh regional councillor DiPaolo. Next one, uh our deputy mayor Gordon Chan.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I'd like to also uh say thank you to the consulting team and our staff and um particularly all the stakeholders, including residents, um that uh already mentioned by two delegates, uh fully participate in the um two particular session. In addition, all the groups that participate in the focus group and also, I have to say for the landowner representative sending us a uh letter as well as uh uh the first delegate today. And we hear you. And I think this is a really a good exercise of that my colleague already said, the second plan demonstrate that city is doing our best to fully engage that all the parties should really have a stake on it. And we hope to have the park there before your grandchildren um uh uh would be around, uh Ms. Wong. Uh but actually lets me to say also, the staff uh did a very comprehensive report. And I will start by comment on uh between page eight to twelve. And I think it's been mentioned a few times, I think also by uh Mr. Ching as well. Now, for this whole block, there is a vision, a proposed vision that is an idea of what the land uses would be, whether you like it or not, but there's a vision. And that's guided by the principles. I think that's a cool start um to the framework. And secondly, um with the complete community, that goes to all those things that have been identified. Uh the lack of current um open space and park. And that would be something that would be incorporated, no matter which option that is taken. I mean, actually, that's a common theme, the commuter park. And I I like it also civic block, so give a bit more prominence to this uh city hall building. It's not just another building. It's where the uh center of your local government is. Um one particular aspect, I think we will have to see what's coming out later on, is that consistently, because of the increase, no matter which option, uh there'll be more people moving in, so that the stormwater pond would have to be expanded. How it to be done in the most environmentally sustainable, sensitive way, that's something to be seen. Um I do want to touch on, um I think some of my colleagues are talking about and the consultant also managed presentation, there will be new role to help to get people from point A to point B, or maybe have more roles to choose. Now, uh maybe I should have asked this question on slide six, uh I believe. Um but maybe our staff can can help answer that. If I look at the dotted line properly, that actually will be at least three additional uh proposed new role going to have ax- maybe, maybe not, access to uh Highway seven. Uh I just want to uh get some clarification. Is that the plan? Maybe to our planning staff or um through you, Mr. Chair?
Uh through you, Mr. Chair. I'll I'll refer the question again to director Flores and her staff.
Sorry, through the chair, could you please repeat the question?
Yes, uh the question is one of the slides, uh uh as I said, I should have raised earlier, um on slide six, um that it seemed to show the dotted line, there are at least three more additional new role or access to Highway seven. Uh I just want to clarify where that's the case through Mr. Chair. The reason I ask that, because if it is, then it's certainly um coordination of other parties such as York Region and so on and so on.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Um all the lines that you see on that slide, they are potential movements routes and they can be public streets, private laneways, active transportation lanes, multi-use path, which we are, our consultants are trying to determine through the next phase of the project when we develop the preferred option. But all the lines in the block structure, they are potential movements.
Yeah, and and I'm mindful for what Councilor Thompson mentioned, need to have some perhaps maybe, which hasn't happened yet, but some kind of estimation about if it's just such a final grid block on that short strip of Highway Seven. Is it really helping or not helping in terms of the, I guess, westbound traffic? But that's down the road. But today is for comment, that's why I raise it. So something to think about. Intuitively, you think, oh, more exit pond or access to Highway Seven or whatever. But consider the configuration there. Is it really? That's something maybe need to look at. But generally speaking, I'm certainly like to see that go to the next step because now for wherever we're assured, wherever people come in for other application in the future, we have a secondary plan on which we can base on. And our staff can assess whatever application coming in in the future with that. So transportation-wise, although we try to solve the issue, but on the other hand, maybe realistically have to look at some estimate in terms of how would be appropriate for that, whether to the short block between East Biffy Creed and Leslie Street. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much. Deputy Chair Godwin Chan. Next one, our Mayor David Weiss. Go ahead.
Thank you. So the purpose of this today is to give our comments, so I'm going to get right into it. This area is al- already a really exciting area. I mean, it has transit, it does have some amenities and it really is a dynamic spot in our community. You know, by the time, whatever we end up doing with this or not doing with this, by the time this gets done, this is just going to be a short bus rapid transit ride to the subway. So it it really is an important part of our city. But I think as as all the delegates said, and I agree 100%, I've been coming to work here for the last more than 10 years. This area really does lack amenities that are are really expected in residential areas. And in particular, I mean, there's no parks. There's very little in the way of pedestrian infrastructure to keep pedestrians safe and so on. And I think this is the kind of thing that we really, I think there's an opportunity here to to make that better. And and that's why I'm excited about this this project. As Mr. Ching said, you know, what we're trying to do here is to create a complete community. And right now, it's good, but it's not really complete in the sense that I would expect it to be. So I do agree with a number of things that are said, and I won't go over all of them, but I do really do think that pushing the density to places that are closer to Highway Seven, Leslie, even the 404, that does make sense. I think we should be doing that. And and I I suspect, given what I've seen in different applications over the years, that's likely going to happen and that's great. I think, but to be honest with you, I I don't think option one is, in my mind, is very realistic. I I get that the residents in that area like that option, and I I suppose if I lived in that area too, I would, I can understand that. But I don't think option one will get us where we need to go with regard to complete community. Option two, I think, is better. It 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 gives that that level of density that we can afford and and justify having the types of amenities, both public infrastructure amenities and private infrastructure amenities and so on. And I I mean, whether or not option three is the best option, I I don't know, but I think that is a very good point on that slide that I asked about, that the more density we have, the more options we have in terms of amenities for the people that live in that area. And that's, you know, that's just a, you know, it's just a fact, I suppose. So I think, you know, we need to be thinking about that. The, I think the elephant in the room with regard to this whole application, and council recognized this when we put that motion forward last year, is that we do have an active application here that's significantly different than than what we're certainly what's here now and what we're contemplating. And we need to, you know, as the commissioner said, tread carefully on how we balance that active application with the the future plans for this area. And and it's a bit of a push and pull type of thing. And and I mean, that's just, that's just a fact, right? So that is an important consideration as we move forward here. One of the things that I I want to just call out on this, because I think this is really important. One of the things that this area is really well known for in Richmond Hill right now is this this cluster of restaurants that we have. It's one of the best locations. It's different than some of the other restaurant clusters that we have, but it's an option for restaurant and dining that we don't have in other parts of the city. And I think that really needs to be baked into the plan. And there's certainly a way to do that. And again, that speaks to having enough density in there to support the restaurants. But I really think we need to be looking at mixed-use commercial for enough of the areas so that we can see patios, we can see coffee shops, we can see restaurants, we can see all of those kinds of things that particularly the people that end up living there and are living there now can enjoy each and every day if they so choose. I mean, you know, they can go walk for, you know, a coffee and a bakery product, they can go out for a nice dinner, they can go out for a casual dinner, all of that stuff is within walking distance. And that's really the exciting end result. So I would really encourage our staff and the and the consultant looking at commercial units that are specifically designed to be homes for the restaurants and the other types of amenities that people living in that area and coming from other parts of the city can really enjoy. It's a it's a different area in town. And and I want to, I want to maximize on the benefit of that differentness. So I think at the end of the day, whether we call it a local development area, whether we call it a key development area, whether we call it option one, option two, option three, I'm I'm less fussed about all of that. But I'm, but I think that, you know, we need to get this right. And we need to be able to create a situation that's functional, that works from a traffic perspective, from an infrastructure perspective. And that, you know, we talk a lot about the downsides of development, but I think in this particular case, we really have an opportunity here to make this area very vibrant, even more so than it is right now. And there's a number of of things in play that really could make that happen. And so I think we need to continue the work on this and make sure we get this right on the money. Thanks very much, Mr. Chair.
Okay, for the round one, anyone has any comments? No? Okay. So all in favor to receive the report? Okay, thank you so much. All passed. So next one will be the motion for the other business, motion from Counselor Thompson. So Counselor, you and you want to move this motion first? Have a speech? Okay, thank you so much.
Uh, thank you. I will be moving the motion, but with a slight amendment, I'm going to ask the clerk to actually bring that up on screen. So in the original motion, I had four action items, of which the first action item seemed to be causing some confusion with what the intent of the motion was about. So a number of people have reached out to me and they're kind of looking at it as being attacked on the entire livestock sector, which was not the intention of this motion. So just to be clear, this is not an anti-meat motion. This motion is simply to promote awareness about dietary choices, which can help reduce emissions over time. So the motion recognizes how the various food systems can play a significant role in global greenhouse gas emissions. In fact, one-third of the greenhouse gas emissions actually come from our food systems. So what research has shown is that the climate impact of plant-based foods can be anywhere between 10 to 50 times less than those of the animal-based foods. That said, I do want to acknowledge that in Canada, the livestock sector is recognized as being among the most efficient and sustainable in the world, which is something we can be proud of. But the reality is that climate change doesn't stop at Canada's borders or even at Richmond Hills borders for that matter. So while I'm not trying to turn anyone into a vegan, in fact, I'm still going to go to Jay's Burger on Young Street and have a smash burger once in a while. You know, which I'm sure is disappointing some of my, you know, some of the plant-based people that are here today, but that's the reality, and I'm sure that's a reality for a a lot of people. What I am trying to do is encourage a more plant-based approach, wherever possible, that can support our broader community energy and emissions plan, the climate goals that we have here in Richmond Hill. This is a global challenge. And leadership means showing that we're willing to take practical, responsible steps right here at the local level. So to be clear, this motion is about awareness and education. It's not about restrictions, and I hope you'll support my motion. Thank you.
Okay. Any objections? Okay, Mayor David, let's go ahead.
Well, thank you very much. And I, first of all, I want to thank Counselor Thompson for bringing forward this motion. I I think this is a really good thing. And I I'm actually surprised to see so few municipalities yet signing up. And so I think that's important for us to to show our support so that that, you know, that happens more and that that's great. I also do want to thank the plant-based treaty folks. I I have to say, you know, I meet lots and lots of different groups over in my life as mayor and and so on. And you guys have really done a good job in arriving on my radar a little while ago, really working hard to develop relationships with both members of council, but also the members of our community. And I really applaud you for that because, you know, sometimes these organizations come in here storming in and expect everything to, you know, happen all at once, and it doesn't work that way. And you guys have done the patient approach and and it it's really a good advocacy approach, and I I congratulate you all on that. I've learned a lot from you in that time. I mean, as opposed to barraging information, it's just been a patient process to to help me and and I'm sure many others to understand what you're all about. And it makes perfect sense to me. So so congratulations on that. I I agree with Counselor Thompson. The the purpose of this motion really is for us to provide leadership at the local level. And the reason that we that I think that's appropriate is that municipalities basically are on the ground with everything that happens, right? And and, you know, food isn't necessarily the core mandate of a municipality, but it's one of the many, many, many things that touch us as as counselors that we can deal with. And, you know, and honestly, we can chew gum and walk at the same time here. We can, we can endorse this type of healthy eating and environmentally based eating and also deliver sewage, water, you know, police services, all that other stuff. I mean, it's it, we we can do that. But, you know, there is no question in my mind that, you know, we've learned over the year that this, over the years, that science says that there are health benefits to eating more plant-based and less animal products. There are definitely environmental benefits from doing the same. I mean, if the world I mean, it it's not to say that we're going to stop animal agriculture. We're not. It's it's not realistic. But over time, we can make shifts and changes in our choices that will actually make a positive difference. Will they save the world unto themselves? No, probably not. But that with a bunch of other things that we're trying to do will definitely have the potential to make the world better. And I I think this is a good example of that. I do appreciate the York Region Federation of Agriculture sending the letter. And I I think they make some very good points here. And I I think it's important, like as Counselor Thompson said, this is not about us going around converting everybody immediately to become vegan or vegetarian or whatever. I I'll go to Jay's Burger and and I got to be honest with you, I kind of like chicken wings too. But I and I mean, people will continue to do that. But on the, you know, when there's, there's new and exciting foods to try that are plant-based, which I have done and really have been quite surprised at how delicious they are, how if you look at the the nutrient value of that food, how how good they are in so many ways for for you. I think it's it's, you know, it's a service that we can offer to our residents to be able to say, you know, hey, in case you didn't know about this, here's something that you might want to consider and try. So anyway, I do, I do appreciate having the opportunity to endorse this today. And I I really, I think it it will be I will be proud to to be able to put our name on that list and provide our voice for any future advocacy that you do. So I I'm pleased to see us dealing with this today and, you know, we'll we'll go from there. Thanks very much.
Okay, Counselor Davidson.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Counselor Thompson, for bringing this forward. And I've spent quite a bit of time thinking about it. And I can tell you unequivocally, personally, we have not eaten much red meat at our house for a very long time. We, I've learned all kinds of things about lentils and beans, and we cook differently, we all eat differently. But with regards to this and any motion, it boils down to my role, not as an individual citizen, but my role as a counselor. And my role as a counselor is to represent all the residents and the businesses in my ward. And that includes a butcher shop in my ward, a seafood shop in my ward, some very small mom and pop delis that sell meat, small supermarkets that sell halal and other special meats. So I can't escape the thought that this, for me to support, is actually voting against the interests of some of the people I represent. So unfortunately, I won't be able to support this motion. But I completely believe that this is a good idea for people to shift over, and that's my personal opinion, just as I think electric vehicles are better than gas cars in terms of the climate. But it's not for me to tell the residents how they live, and it's certainly not for me to vote against some of the businesses in York, in Ward One. So I appreciate the effort and my vote will be no, but for those reasons. Thank you.
Okay, Deputy Mayor David, uh, Godwin Chan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Oh, you finished, Counselor Davidson? Mine is very short and simple. I echo what Counselor Thompson and Mayor West talked about. And I also also thank the group Climate Action educating me for not just on this issue, but some other ones. And I saw some nodding and it's certainly learning, opportunity, engaging with the community, which I really enjoy. And and I saw the highlight on the number two on the revised motion. And I was just happy to share, I think, for the last 17 or every year, number of years I've been holding Wausau Summer Fest and now Spring Fair in May, I always have vegetarian burger as an option. So, so, yeah, so I'm all for it in terms of including, not excluding, including. I think that's the idea. So I'm in support of the motion in front of us. Thank you.
Okay, so should we have a recorded vote or? Okay, so. You want a second?
Just a quick comment. I support this. I think Counselor Thompson for bringing it forward. I mean, I I really, I don't understand this, this is a very positive motion. We're going to encourage and promote, you know, the inclusion of of an option that's great for the planet and and does our part and shows leadership role. And and, you know, if we're if we're supporting a baseball diamond, we're not against hockey players. We we want to help everyone. We we so I have no problems supporting supporting this motion. And I think it it, we need to take it, take it for what it is. We're encouraging this this very healthy practice.
Okay, Counselor Davidson? Okay, so I believe this is only one opposition from Counselor Davidson. All other in favor? Or should we do a? Okay, let's vote. Okay. All those in favor? Okay, any objections? One objection. So the motion passed. Okay, the next one, emergency and time-sensitive matters, anyone? Nope, perfect. Last one, adjournment. So any, anyone want more? Okay, Counselor Shu, all in favor? Okay. The motion passed. Thank you so much. See you next week.